Thank you. It is Tuesday, January 14, 2025. We are the City of Redmond, and this is the Finance Administration and Communication Committee of the whole. We have, I believe, six council members present, four in chambers, and two online. We are all here. Yes. So we are all here. And we have four agenda items. And I think we begin with our Information and Technology Services. And I am ready for you to begin, Director.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. My CIO, Mike Barshend. Sorry, but I'm on vacation, so I'm still in a little bit of a vacation brain fog. Just here to introduce Melissa Brady, our EDM and GIS manager. She is going to talk a little bit about a managed data governance-related managed services contract that we're hoping to have approved.
So we have two items tonight. The first one is the SQL Managed Services Contract. So first off, I'm Melissa Brady, the city's Enterprise Data and GIS Manager. And I'm here today to bring you a consulting services agreement for SQL Managed Services. We have been partnering with our database vendor, Central Logic, for the past eight years to manage our SQL Server infrastructure, and they have proven to be a valuable resource for us. They ensure our systems remain reliable, secure, available, and high performing. They provide 24 by 7 monitoring of our systems, as well as providing for off-hour technical support during upgrades and incidents. This contract serves to supplement our internal staff, enabling them to focus on the implementation of new systems and then continued development of our data and analytics program. Our current contract expired in October of 2024, and we are asking council to approve another two-year contract for a total of $141,240, which was previously approved in the 2025-2026 budget. We plan to bring the SQL Managed Services Contract to the consent agenda at the next council meeting on January 21, 2025, for your approval. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions on that.
Great. Thank you for that briefing, council members. Any -- Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Just a quick question about any -- if there are changes within the contract, I know typically it's just going to be a standard. What we had in place is what we're going to continue on with the new two-year. But are there any changes that need to be called out at this time?
No changes, and it's just our standard consulting agreement.
Thank you.
I see no hands raised online. Any questions from anyone else? So I have one question. I -- what? We'll go to Councilmember Anderson.
She put in the chat she cannot speak right now, but is interested in who the contract is with.
The company is Central Logic.
Thank you.
And is that Councilmember Anderson that shows up here?
Yes, she just said "great" with a thumbs-up emoji.
Got it. So I appreciate, you know, when we have a vendor that does what we partner well with and provides the service we need. Are there any requirements from a purchasing perspective for you to go out to bid on a contract like this within your department ever so often to just make sure that we do in fact have all of the players' attention and that we can do comparisons? And did we do any of that?
In this particular case, we did not. We just renewed a contract with a vendor that we've got a trusted long-term relationship with. But to answer your question, as far as the requirement to, we align with what finance and procurement requires us to. And on occasion, when we are looking for new vendors, or we've got some new work, or change in scope, or change in rates, or become aware of different offerings out there that -- from different organizations that have competing products or services, we certainly do go out for bids. In this particular case, we did not.
So let me just clarify the question. Are there any policies or procedures that require you to go out to bid, no matter what, on a periodic basis?
That I'm not 100% certain on. I'd have to consult with our procurement folks.
And I can also check in with the Finance Director.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any objections to this going on consent? I see none. Sounds like we're good. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
And then we'll go to item two, right? You're with us for item two?
Yes, yes. Okay, so doubleheader here for data today. I've got one slide I want to put up on the screen. So I want to first off thank council for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to share an exciting and important initiative. The city is ready to engage in a new data governance and strategy project. This project will lay the foundation for how we manage, protect, and use data across all city departments, ensuring that our data is accurate, secure, accessible when needed. As you know, data is one of our most valuable assets. It helps us make informed decisions, improve services for our citizens, and drive operational efficiency. But without a clear framework for managing it, data can quickly become fragmented, inconsistent, and even a liability. Improperly managed data can lead to inefficiency, compliance risks, and even legal challenges. That's where data governance comes in. Data governance is about ensuring that our data is used responsibly and securely and in compliance with privacy and legal requirements. It's about protecting the city's data assets, ensuring that our departments have what they need to operate effectively, and fostering a culture where data drives informed decision-making at all levels. To kick off this initiative, we will partner with an experienced consultant who specializes in developing data governance frameworks for government organizations. The consultant will help us build a tailored governance plan that includes, one, a data governance committee. This group will oversee all data-related decisions across departments, ensuring consistency and accountability. They will also help us with a data classification policy, where we'll define how to categorize different types of data, ensuring sensitive data is handled securely. And lastly, they'll help us develop a clear data access and usage policy. These policies will specify who can access which data and under what circumstances, ensuring ethical and appropriate use. We have a lot of data here at the city. The project will begin by focusing on just two key data systems, our HR and our permitting systems. These data sets are straightforward, yet critical to city operations. By using these systems as initial use cases, we can develop a scalable governance practice that can be applied to other data across the city over time. So what are the benefits of this? The benefits of this initiative are wide-reaching. First off, it allows us to improve decision-making. With better, accurate, and accessible data, decision-makers can act more quickly and with greater confidence. In addition, it helps us with operational efficiency. Well-organized data reduces duplication and errors and delays, and streamlines workflows across departments. Compliance and risk mitigation. Proper data governance helps us meet legal and regulatory requirements. It also helps us with a data-driven culture. This program will help create a culture where data is used effectively across all levels of government to drive transparency and accountability. So what are we asking from council? We will be submitting the data governance contract for your approval on the consent agenda next week, January 21. The contract total is $112,400, and it was budgeted in the 2025-2026 budget. This project will require input from multiple departments, and we are seeking your support to help us ensure its success. We plan on providing council periodic updates to keep you informed on our progress along the way. In the coming weeks, we'll be working with city leaders and department heads to form the data governance committee and initiate the groundwork for the project. The goal is to wrap up this first phase, and I have to stress it is only the first phase, by July. By July, we will finalize some of the policies that can guide future phases of governance across other data sets. In addition, future phases will address other policy areas. We're confident that with your support, we can create a framework that improves how the city uses data, enhances operation, and ultimately serves our citizens more effectively. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Council questions. Councilmember Forsythe.
Thanks. I'm excited about this project. I'm sure you guys are, too. Who will be the -- on the governance committee?
That's yet to be decided. When the consultant comes on, one of the first things we'll be doing is meeting with the director's team, the mayor, and Melissa, and sitting down and kind of scoping out who will be involved in governance.
Okay, great. I would advocate for a council spot on that, as the policy development work needs to occur. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Thank you, and appreciate the work on this. Excited for this work to get started and us to move towards our bigger city data governance strategy. I can understand why we would start with scoping to look at particular areas. So my understanding from what you're saying is that we would start with that, and then we would take that as a model to scale to other places. Is that correct?
Correct.
I guess my question is, because the types of data that you're going to be using in terms of the permitting data and the HR data are kind of more -- well, one is kind of more internal, and then the other is more kind of business process type of thing. I think one of the places where we've had a lot of discussion in terms of data usage has been where resident data gets gathered by some of our different technology systems. And I'm just wondering how these modeling off of those systems will be able -- how you anticipate those will be able to translate to data governance over things that are, you know, data that's being collected by some of our more forward-looking technologies used by police and other types of entities.
I think initially with the scoping meetings with the consultant, we will be talking about the whole ecosystem of all of the different types of data, and we're confident that they'll help us kind of look through that lens of the bigger picture. We picked these two because they are sort of tried-and-true data, you know, HR data and the permitting data. On the permitting side, though, we don't think about it often, but there's a lot of citizen data in there. Every time somebody applies for permit, you've got your personal information, your address, information about your project, the cost of the project. So I think it should give us a pretty good flavor for how we might move forward.
Great. And then just two other quick questions, if the chair will permit. One is, is part of the scope to also look at practices for sharing data across departments? Like, for example, you know, how police or fire might share data with each other, or how -- or with planning, or with, you know, the different departments, since I know especially for coordinating things like emergency response, we want to be able to see some sharing of data, but also have really good governance over that as we cross between departmental systems. So just curious to hear if that will be a part of the scope.
It definitely will. That's the whole thing with the data access and usage policy. You know, who has access to it? When do they have access? And how -- what are the proper uses? So just because we have this data, and we could even share it internally, what are the ways we want to share that?
Great, yeah. And potentially, what should we be enabling sharing on that we're not currently, where we could be making modifications, to, you know, have better responses based on sharing data across silos? So I guess would be a question for me. And then last question, I guess, that I think might be interesting would be, will there be a best-practice analysis kind of compared against our own practices as part of this? Like, will we be looking at how other cities have done, solved for similar things that'll come up in the analysis, or is that out of scope?
That would be in scope, and that's one of the reasons why we chose to bring in a consultant who has that experience that can guide us through the best practices.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I apologize for not being able to be there in person today. Ms. Brady, I really appreciated your framing of this conversation around improving decision-making. And I think a genesis of that, at least in this council chamber, has been the moment when councils about -- asked to evaluate and particularly approve a new technology partner, and needing to be more clear on how that partner will use city data. So I'm wondering if you can help me understand in the phasing of this project and the overall scope, how that factors in. I really want to be sure that part of the data governance policy includes how every department consistently throughout the city will evaluate potential partners, including how they manage their data and who they give access to when we're using their product, who else has access to our data, or who may in the future. I think it's a really important question for council to have proof that it has been evaluated by a standard as those requests come forward. Could you help me understand if and when which phase that might -- that question might be addressed in?
I think we will probably broadly address that in the first phase. Again, when we're talking about the access and usage, you know, we'll be looking at access and usage both internally and externally for those two data sets. I think the part -- the second part where we're actually sharing the data with another vendor, and then how they are able to share that information, might be a secondary phase. But I'll make a note of this, and I can go back and think about it a little bit more, maybe get more information to you.
Thank you. It really would be helpful. I think, again, in that frame of faster and more complete and confident decision-making, I think it would be really helpful for the council in the future. I can imagine a case in a future memo of a new piece of technology that's being requested from a department, you know, a simple checkbox, "Yep, this has been evaluated," and the governance policies of the vendor have been rigorously tested against our own standards. It's kind of my vision there. So happy to continue the conversation offline as well. Thank you so much.
I could just add that we do currently have a data sharing agreement that we have in place for any consultant, or any contractor, or external service that has access to our data, or requires access to our data. And that agreement, anytime we're sharing data with an outside organization, they have to sign that, and it puts some strict stipulations around how the data can be used, that we continue to have ownership of it, any restrictions on how or if the other partner can share the data. So absolutely, I think it makes a lot of sense to revisit that and look at it more closely as part of this initiative. But I just wanted to give some assurance that we do take that issue seriously even now, and we do have something in place that helps regulate when we do share data externally.
I see no other council questions, just a couple of quick questions from me. So this is -- this -- how many phases do you think there's going to be? Well, let me ask it differently, sorry. This is like a seven-to-nine-week agreement with this vendor. And I get it, they're doing just what you said. They're doing an evaluation of our current state, kind of a vision of our future state, and what it's going to take to get us there, and how we result in something that we've been trying to achieve. When I read that, and when I listen to your opening remarks, I'm -- the first thing that comes to my mind, being the cynic that I am, is what have we been doing? I mean, have we been making terrible decisions? I mean, what -- there must be something that we have in place. Can you give me some sense that our current state is not as bad as my mind led me to believe?
Yeah, it's not the Wild West. We don't just hand out data as requested. It's really kind of a -- the difference between the future state and what we do today is right now, it's we look at each individual situation and analyze them and review them individually. So we would go through and specifically look at what data is being -- what is the data type? How is it going to be used? What is the business use case? You know, are there regulatory issues that need to be addressed as that data is stored, as it's used? The nice thing that I think we are in a pretty -- we are in a pretty good spot with as far -- with regards to the security and the integrity and the usability of the data we have. This puts a nice package around it, and this puts together formal processes and policies and procedures, so we don't need to look at each one of those requests and each one of those initiatives individually. We've got basically a framework in place where we can say, okay, this is the data type, here's the already spelled-out procedure for managing that data and sharing the data. So yeah, and I think you see that now in a lot of situations where there is something new, and there's some uncertainty on how it's -- how that data is going to be used or where it's going to be used, and then they -- it ends up in front of council with some rigorous conversations, so.
So it's not so -- I mean, there is some risk mitigation involved in this, but what you just described in my mind is more about efficiency, better ease of communication, ease of referencing, maybe even you end up with a structured workbook of some kind. I mean, a manual. But so going back to my original question, what is the overall timeframe? You've got this first phase. When would we expect to see that future state or that vision sort of be manifested, achieved? Is that like a year, two years?
Well, one of the deliverables from this is a roadmap for us. So I'll be much better to be able to talk about it once we get the first phase over, to be able to tell you kind of what the big picture looks like.
Great, which leads to my final question, which I appreciate Councilmember Forsythe making the recommendation that someone from council be on that committee. But we still, as a collective body, are interested in this for sure. So I'm assuming, and I guess I'm asking, is your plans to come after Phase One is complete, back to council? Let us know what that roadmap looks like, what further contracts are likely -- vendor contracts are likely to be involved, and, you know, what are expectations around funding and resources and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then a technicality, this statement of work says the fire department and planning, I think you said, human resources and planning.
The fire department was one of the use cases for how they wanted to use HR data, and so they were put in the scope of work as one of the use cases of how, you know, what is the proper use of HR data.
Great, perfect. Any other questions from council? So we are looking for a consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there any objections to this contract going on consent agenda? I think we're good. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item three. Not to diminish the other three items, but I think this might be the feature presentation of the show. This is around our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Contract, and we have COO files. And take it away.
Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So before you today is a contract with the Edge Advisory Group. They are the consultant we have been working with on our DEI strategic plan. And the contract is broken up into three buckets. And I talked a little bit about this when we were talking through the budget. The three buckets in this contract is to finish up our roadmap, that it is really a rollout of the respect, equity, and diversity, and inclusion, training facilitators, so that when we have new employees come into the city, that they are kind of steeped in the culture of respect. The second one is building out an Office of Equity, and it's really analyzing the staffing needs for that office and what the primary objectives of that new office will be. And then the third bucket is management training to align kind of the city's ready strategic plan with the Office of Equity, making sure that we maintain that alignment with our strategic plan. The total of this contract is a little over $233,000, and my ask would be that I could put this on consent at the next business meeting on January 21. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Thanks. I'm excited to see this brought forward. Can you go into a little more detail on the services that Anita and her team will provide as far as standing up that department, as we've had some retention issues in the past, and we just want to make sure that we're giving this person the support they need as, on average, a person, and that role only lasts about two years, and we've seen that turnover, so.
Exactly.
Tell us a bit more.
I'm glad you asked that question. We do have, which I can send you via email, I didn't put it in the packet because it was draft, but it is really all the things that we're going to do to make sure that office is successful. So it -- we'll start with data gathering, updating our data. We already have a lot of DEI data, but we want to look at that data, update it, make sure it's relevant. We want to kind of embed kind of the culture of respect, equity, diversity, and inclusion in the city, which is looking at performance measures, making sure they're relevant. We'll establish best practices. We'll look -- we'll identify kind of the structure of the office, look at how we -- who -- what kind of characteristics the next leader needs to have, and then also, you know, how we successfully transition that next leader into the office, so that it is effective, and we hopefully keep somebody there for a very long time.
Thank you. And if there's anything we need to do to elevate that role, please let us know.
I will.
Councilmember Kritzer.
Yeah, so following up on that, on the -- so if I'm hearing Office of Equity, that sounds like a kind of new department for us, where we would have a -- it says director-level role actually in the con -- or in this contract, and it talks about this is a director-level type of position, that it will also be assessing what types of positions are needed. So is the outcome likely that after doing some of this scoping, that we would want to establish various positions within this new kind of Office of Equity that will be designed?
I don't want to presuppose an outcome, so I think it'll just -- we'll have to kind of, again, go through the data, go through, you know, all the logic of it, and then kind of figure out how we make this successful. So I don't know if it's a new department, a division, you know, I just don't know at the moment. But I'm hoping to, you know, make sure that it is kind of its own microcosm, so that the leader has very specific things that they need to do, and it's very clear what that work plan is and what those items are, because I think that's always helpful for people who are leading programs like this.
That's great. Well, and I think, given the fact that we did in the last budget, budget for two FTEs to be within this department, I think at the very minimum, I would expect that that would be an outcome of part of the design of this. But also, I think I would be interested to hear from Anita on, you know, what does it look like to fully do this well? And as Council Vice President Forsythe said, you know, to -- for the council to be able to look at that, should more resources be needed. One question on the -- attaches the draft strategic plan, and I think we had talked about bringing that back for a study session, so that we could actually talk about that plan. I wonder, actually, once we get this contract done, I'm going to put this on consent and have kind of the renewed services from the Edge Advisory Group in place, if maybe for that study session, we If maybe for that study session, we could include Anita in it, so that way we could look at this together, as well as we might talk about any of the preliminary work that's going on with the actual staffing.
So, Anita and I are right now just looking at the timeline, and so what I want to do is come back to council in February to actually say, this is what I'm going to need from council, and here's the participation I'm going to need, so that you're very clear on the activities that I will need your help on. And probably through that, we can kind of establish, you know, some of the timelines and things for what you discussed.
Great, that sounds good, and I can follow up with you about the study session, because I do think this ready strategic plan is looking nice, but I think we did originally tell the council that we would have a chance to review and provide any edits before it was fully finalized, so would appreciate that to happen.
Other council questions? So, I have sort of a question, really maybe just a comment. So, I watch the news, unfortunately, and there is a lot of news about DEI, and even tied to one of the worst disasters in California. And as you know, and you can tell by tonight's meeting and any other meeting, I think council in total is very much supportive and sees the value of a successful DEI program and transformation and culture. I think it's really important for the city of Redmond to let the residents and let the community know the value, the value of why we do this. It's not because we're diehard liberals trying to help somebody, it's because we know that these are going to achieve better results. We're going to get a broader pool of expert people, and we're going to get the right people in place. So, I think it's really important that we deal with that, because it is, in fact, a public conversation right now. And I think council should be involved with that. I think the mayor should be involved with that. I think we all should really get behind our beliefs and our values and let our community know that this is in the best interest of the city and the future of the city. I hope that that comes through.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, what?
Councilmember Stewart has her hand raised.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, thank you so much. A couple thoughts. So, COO files, thank you so much, and I do want to acknowledge, we were discussing, as it was written in the memo, a new title for this body of work, the Office of Equity, but we are starting from scratch, and I think it's important to acknowledge when we aren't. There's been many years of work leading up to this point. I do think that Anita is probably best suited to help advise through this moment of transition. The council vice president referenced a well-known statistic around the tenure of DEI leaders in institutions like ours, and I just want to state for the record that if we want to break the trend, then we have to do something different. So, I do hope that the self-reflection of the city's role in the tenure of leaders in all capacities, but is also part of this moment before we go and look to hire a new individual. I've already looked on the city's website and noticed, you know, we're not actually yet hiring for this role, and so that spoke to me as a moment of, we are taking a beat to reflect, and I hope we reflect on our own role in retaining a great individual. And I am a bit uncomfortable with the idea in the second bullet point on this topic, that the consultant will act as a leader of the Office of Equity for six months while a determination is made. I think this is a little bit different than something we just celebrated, where we went local, we just celebrated all of our incredible work with Eastside For All, and to me, hiring an outside consultant for a very limited duration, and that being Anita, someone we already have a relationship with, is pragmatic. But, I do want to say that if six months from now, we are in a position to be ready to hire, or to be really clear, or for us to have a conversation again, where we can all be more confident on the future direction, I won't be really interested in extending this body of work, the part where we have an external consultant acting in that office, because as we've seen with other projects through Redmond 2050, we can be more successful when we keep it local, when we build and invest in our team. So, I just wanted to kind of state that. So, thank you, I'm happy to move this to consent, again, knowing that six months from now, I'm hoping that we're having a very different conversation and ready to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sala Houdin.
Thank you, and I agree completely with Councilmember Stewart's position or statement regarding that consultant. I think the part that I really wanted to emphasize and focus on is that community/stakeholder engagement, and ensuring that we're looking as much as we can to the opportunities provided by our community leader organizations and the work that they're doing, so that if we can loop them in or bring them in, I know Eastside For All was mentioned, as much as possible, I think that would really be beneficial for the plan and our opportunities to retain staff members, ensure that, you know, we're creating an ecosystem for everyone to thrive. So, that's my, you know, only focus there, is I agree with Councilmember Stewart on that consultant aspect as well, but excited to see this on consent.
Great, thank you. There is definitely a piece of community outreach that we will be doing. We are just now looking at the details of that, listening sessions, focus groups, you know, what that exactly looks like, but that is definitely a part of this.
Councilmember Kritzler.
Yeah, one quick follow-up on the six-month aspect of the contract in that role that was brought up. Is the vision with that, that potentially during those six months, that Anita might facilitate, would be a part of like the hiring of the next person? So, maybe in six months, we're getting ready to do that transition and onboard, or is it kind of begin after six months?
And I hope in six months that we will have the person here, so we will have finished the work that we need to do to say, what is the staffing model, and that we will be recruiting before that time, so that in six months, we have the person here who will lead the office.
Great, and then my last request would be, I think this is something council's really interested in, and I know previously we had the DEI advisor reporting during committee. Would be great to have updates on how this is progressing during committee, ongoing during the upcoming six months, just so we can be tracking it.
Definitely, we will. We had planned on doing the updates every other month, like we had that rhythm, but my guess is it would probably be more frequent than that, because we'll have things to say during that time.
I see no other council questions. Is there any objection to this going on consent? I see one thumb up. I recall two concerns about part of it, but they also said they would agree to put this on consent, so I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have one more item, and outcome of crisis communication. Outcome of what? Sorry. Take it away.
Good afternoon, evening, council. I'm Lisa Maher, I'm the Deputy Director for the Executive Department, and tonight I am sharing with you the outcome of the RFP that we just completed for crisis communication support for the city. This was the second time that we had gone out for RFP and had much better success this go-round. I remembered that during the budget process, or late in the year, there were several questions from you all that you wanted to hear our progress on this, so just wanted to share where we ended up. The contract through the RFP process was awarded to the Ferry Group Incorporated. They are a local crisis communication and PR agency in the state of Washington. They will be working with us first on a crisis communication plan that we really want to get in place quickly. So, that will be the first part of their assignment, and then they will be an on-call consultant for us for any crisis that might arise in the city for a two-year period with one option for a two-year extension for a total of four years. So, they will, like I said, develop a crisis plan, they will help us, when necessary, community relations, media relations, monitoring and reporting, crisis issue management, short and long-term versions of that, creative content development services, online reputation management, or search optimization, reporting, and then kind of recapping any crises, situations, and sharing what improvements might need to be made. There were, I believe, six, off the top of my head, sorry, companies that, one, two, three, four, five, six, that were reviewed in this RFP, and the Ferry Group scored the highest amongst the group that did the evaluation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Thank you. So, just referencing the contract to the memo, it looks like this is for a specific scope of work and not for any on-call, even though they list on-call services in here, the scope of work, as stated in the memo and the contract, has the same number. So, anything on-call would be outside of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's... We're good with that plan for now?
Yeah, it would be really hard, based on whatever crises in the broad range that we could be utilizing them for, to put a number on that. So, I would envision that after the plan is, you know, brought back to council and is in place, then the on-call service would kick in and at, you know, a certain number or situation would be brought back to.
But, we're not looking to do a retainer or anything with them.
Correct, not this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kritzler.
Well, I'm excited about this. I looked a little bit at their website, too, and it does seem like they have a variety of different clients, which I think are at the scale that we're working at as well. So, that's great. In terms of the crisis communications plan, I think you mentioned bringing it back to council, which will be great, and it would be great to see within that plan. I know we've discussed this in terms of other aspects of kind of crisis management, of making sure that it is clear when there is a crisis, kind of what our different leaders' roles are, and if that plan can include guidance for council members during crises, or like how kind of, what that communications look like between the different leaders in the city during a crisis, like for, and in particular, PR aspects of things, as kind of some basic guidance for us to use when we have something, so that we all can kind of develop that muscle of how we work together to be able to share information with our residents in key times where there's a lot of questions.
Yes.
I don't want to miss online, and I'm struggling to do that. Anybody? Okay. So, I always ask this question, it's not a lot of money, what are they going to do? I mean...
It could be a lot of money at some points, but, you know, almost $30,000 to assess what we currently do and then provide us with a plan, which is something they've done for many organizations, including other cities, so we would have a footprint that we could move forward with. That's what the money that you're seeing here. You may see a much larger number as things could arise in the future. I'll use, since Mike is to my left, you know, a cybersecurity crises or issue could stem, you know, months and go into hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I don't... I think just for the plan, it seems market-priced.
So, they're here for two years?
The on-call contract will be for two years with one, two-year extension if the city desires, but we will execute as soon as council, as soon after this, since you don't have to approve this amount, we will begin to execute the plan process.
So, if I was to go home and my neighbors are hanging out in front of my house, and they said, hey, you know, we've just been watching the news on California fires, what is the city doing about preparing? And I said, well, yeah, matter of fact, tonight, we did a 28,000-plus on-call contract. How would I... What would be my elevator speech? What would I tell them next, that they're going to benefit, or they're going to feel more safe or secure from what we're doing tonight?
I think we have in place a great emergency management system of how we execute during, you know, minor to what might someday be major crises. Nowadays, there are different types of crises, like what I mentioned, cybersecurity, climate events, those type of things, where we may not have the learned experience around us to the level that we need. I also think that this not only could help us with that, but provide the steps in a very quick-moving situation, like the Palisades fires, the California fires, of how to share information and accurately and in a timely manner, in a broader sense than we might already think we know the best about. I think community preparation, that we have some room to be instructed there on some of that and education. I think one of the things that President Kritzler mentioned as far as electeds and city staff being prepared with the information that they can share, and how we execute that in a timely manner. So, I feel like there's some areas, obviously, that we can learn from that, but that if we could have it just at our fingertips in a written document or a digital document that we can all access, it just gives us a little bit more security and support, that no matter who is able or is working on it can go step by step by step, and that we also have a local support that can supplement the work we might need if you're dealing with a large, you know, quickly moving disaster or incident.
Yep, great. No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you helping us kick off the year, spending some money for the good of the community.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything... Oh, Councilmember Kritzler.
Just one quick follow-up, as you were speaking there, that I was thinking is also, you know, I think it's both getting accurate information out there, and we know that because of how information gets out there, they're often going to turn into misinformation on various things, and it may be on a disaster happening, could be on a policy. So, I would love to see as part of the plan, some guidance on kind of how to address when there's kind of persistent misinformation, and how we communicate on that effectively to make sure the correct facts are received.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no objections to consent?
It actually does not have to go to consent.
Oh, it's under $50,000.
Only, correct, because it's below your threshold.
Got it. Well, then, we won't see it on consent, but we'll see it in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we've come to the end of the agenda, the end of the business meeting. Anybody have anything they would like to add? Well, we're all here together. Okay, good. With that, we are adjourned.